I'd like to know if you have a vote. Mr. Johnson, here. 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 Mrs. Moorehead, here. Mr. Ryanian, here. Mrs. McFadden, here. Mr. O'Dell, here. Mr. Gallagher, here. Mr. McFadden, here. Mr. O'Dell, here. Mr. Gallagher, here. Mr. McFadden, here. Mr. Johnson, this is duly constituted meeting of the Great Village City Council. We please join in with our allegiance to the Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us. First item is to introduce any scouts or students that we have in the audience. So yes, thank you for waiting patiently. Do you want me to rise and give us your name and what school you attend and why you're here tonight?
Oh, I, yes, you go, you go. Oh, hi, Andrea Foley, I'm a senior at Chana County East and we're here for a government assignment.
Hi. I'm Lisa Chidok and I also am a senior from Chana County East and I'm also here for a government assignment.
I'm Lily Walter, I'm a senior at Chana County East and we're the same thing.
I'm Del Kim Kim. Thank you for letting us speak here.
And then you two in the back?
Hi, my name is Benjamin Please, I'm a senior of Offlers High School and I'm here for a civic service assignment for government.
Great.
Hi, my name is George, I'm a senior from Offlers High School and I'm here for a civic service assignment.
That's wonderful, welcome. So we in the corner.
I'm Thomas Girl, I'm a member of the County Community Board and I'm here for a government task.
That's great, well, thank you all for being here and like you chose to visit us, I'm sure you didn't have gone anywhere, so thank you for coming here. Next item is public participation, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the council for any reason? Seeing none, then closes public participation. Next item is consent agenda, are there any items that anyone would like to have removed to discuss separately? Seeing none, okay.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Items, by staff, I was wondering if you were able to make any of the thought.
Thank you. Corporal, please call the hall. Mr. Sweetberg, aye. Ms. Nelson, aye. Mr. Sherman, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Michelson, aye. Mr. Wong, aye. Mrs. Meyer, aye. Mrs. Moorehead, aye. Mr. Ryanian, aye. Mrs. McFadden, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Gallagher, aye. Okay, consent agenda is adopted. Next item is committee reports, Justice Committee, Brooke, are you making that report? Well, I was hoping that our committee chair would be here in time. So we think Joyce would be up in later. Well, in a time, that's a thing. That's kind of a vague time, we don't have no idea. Would you, would you, could you remind me if you were prepared just in case? If he comes in, we'll let him know.
I do want to recognize JD Kenny who is our chair for Justice Fest this year and I'd ask him to please bring in the figures so that we knew exactly what to counsel exactly what was going on and what went out. Joyce was nice enough to provide the following. As of eleven seventh, two thousand sixteen, we have a balance of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So that means that we still have that seed money, that the ten thousand, which was from the city. So we can still have the seed money on that, which is turning over that seed money every year and looking to hire. This year, we were a little tight on our talent budget, looking to do even bigger and better for two thousand seventeen. We hit our goals with attendance at about, we're estimating about thirteen thousand hundred and we are a little under ten thousand dollars in attendance revenue. So everything is working out, we're building to the positive, building to the reserves. So hopefully in the future, we will not have, ask the council for the ten thousand dollars, but we're keeping it in reserve right now. And JD, you were here, I would congratulate him because of his management, his organizational skills, who was very successful and hopefully everybody can have the time of honor. Thanks to JD, he's an excellent chairperson.
Ted?
First, the question on the ten thousand dollars, because I think in two thousand seventeen, we had another ten thousand dollars allocated for that, is that again not needed? Still confused on, so our stuff is long, not wrong, I'm just trying to make sure.
It was extended, it was extended as another ten thousand dollars to budget for the next year. Hopefully, we will have enough in reserves that that will be the last year that we need. Again, we believe we were tied on our talent budget this year and didn't go forward and we'll be putting more in our talent budget next year. We've got a pretty good pattern, pretty good, pretty good, uh, sister going and nowhere foster, you know, Joyce, he has.
The committee wants to not have the same thing happen with the third year when they had a run out and once, all of the funds extended are extended, whether we have the festival or not, you know, can we date the sales to pay them? So we need to have enough money into the council to go festival to cover, I mean, something, have a cushion of that. So there's, the reserve is nice, but there could be something about, so, so that the outside debt, we always have that down.
Have JD?
I'm here.
Brooke, at the municipal foundation meeting last week, it recorded that Justice Fest had thirty-four, thirty-six thousand dollars remaining. Does this twenty-four take out the ten thousand dollar seed money or, or does the ten thousand dollar expenditure come across in the last five days?
The fund, the financial coordinator foundation was at the ten for thirty year and we have October charges that kind of come through yet, which includes a payment of sales tax and all the items that go, payment of the alcohol tax, the items that sold, t-shirts and fans and merchandise was purchased. So that's still some things outstanding that are reflected in that, that's everything we know of where we will end up the year.
Eric? They, they, wasn't that explained that that was already taken out of the, that money in the meeting? Maybe I just understand it so I, and then there's right next to me. I don't remember. Sorry, sorry, thank you.
Again, if we had JD here, we kept everything going down on, having delighted to have him report to you. The other reason I wanted to mention is so that he could get kudos from the group key and the whole committee fan and everybody did such a fantastic job. And Joyce has all the details, he can move anymore. Joyce, are there still more votes to move on?
Last, everything should be on that one exception, possibly eight, nine, all. I wish my time dropped.
Thank you, Brooke. Thanks to your partner, JD, just come back in, we'll say thank you.
And thanks to Joyce, and May, and May for all of your staff, and to you.
Yep, it was a great month, thank you so much. The next items were discussed earlier this evening at the committee of the whole meeting before tonight, so I will add to the motion on the first one, COQ two oh one six dash six four. Chilin?
I hope that the council could agree with standards, short term and long term disability insurance, state employees.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Same for the next one, COQ two oh one six dash six five. Ashley, is there a second?
Yeah, these are both ordinances.
Oh, so these will, this will be roll call on all this?
Oh, no, just the six five, I know, no, when you're asking.
Okay. So are you, are you saying that this needs to be two separate versions or this one is going to be a roll call? Okay, so Ashley, I need you to bring that into.
I make a motion to approve adoption of ordinance twenty-three fifty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan?
Question, I'm still unclear from earlier, there's a provision in this that talks about drawing blood samples and it's in section five, ten point three one. C three. And I'm just trying to make sure that if this is going to apply to our police officers, if we have some idea of who's going to make the following decision. And if you read the provisions, this one said directed by the officer, if you're given a statement, that a professional shall withdraw the sample of one as soon as practical, deliver it to the law enforcement officer as directed by the law enforcement officer, as soon as practical, provided the collection of the sample does not jeopardize a person's life, cause serious injury to the person, or seriously to the person with medical assessment, care, or treatment. And I guess it's not clear to me in there, who's going to make the call? And it's sort of, you know, I can see what's happening on the scene of an accident perhaps too, and I just, I want to make sure that our officers have good direction on if they direct, who's going to make the call on the proviso, that taking the sample doesn't jeopardize that person's life. Including why delaying them getting to a hospital is a good question.
JD, you have a vote.
So to answer that question, we would never endanger anybody's life if there was a medical issue, regardless of the criminal or investigation, that we're always going to defer to their life-saving issues they have. If we were going to have, and maybe I can, if we were going to have this type of issue, there would be supervision call and I don't think this happens frankly very often. And I'm guessing, could it happen, yes, but to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever done this in three, four, five years here.
I understand, I wouldn't suggest that anyone on this officer could jeopardize, I'm just trying to be clear on if someone was on certain drugs and the medical professional says, you know what, that's not a good idea right now, I assume they got the old call. And decided that.
Correct.
Okay. Because that's not, because I've been taking, feel free to comment if you have a lot of experience in this. If, if that's not clarity, but if that's the way it would be applied, then I can, I can look at that.
Is this on the fire section or?
Yes, under the fire section because what they did, they, when they amended the state gun laws a few years ago and just in provision for, you know, for it being a sole violation to possess while under the influence, I remember reading this in the legislative history. They actually put this requirement in there for, you know, it is, you have to prove that they're under the influence. So it's to make it harder, all of these provisions are in here to make it harder to charge somebody with crime, rape, and possession while under the influence, because you have to prove they're under the influence and essentially the same way you have to prove it for driving, so my understanding is these provisions match the DUI provisions also in state law establishing DUI by non-attentive.
And Dan, this would be, this would not be the primary test that we would use, it would be a breath test, it would be a primary test.
But my, I still, my question still stands though, that is, Katie, you have depression, please tell us, the idea that law enforcement officer can direct someone to, to, to take the blood sample from someone and then provided that that action doesn't cause serious injury, jeopardize life, so on. And just in there, someone's having a decision, I want to ask, one thing I'm asking for is who makes, I mean, what's everyone's understanding is that who makes that call to meet the proviso?
I, I don't know that, that's why I initially deferred to Tim because I don't know what the law enforcement's practice is.
Okay.
And Tim, I think you were saying that the officer would defer to the medical profession.
Yeah, and, and again, if we were going to draw blood, this would not be something that the road officer would just make an arbitrary decision there in the field, then we get a older supervisor and say, this is the situation we have. The first test we'd want to do would be a rep test, that's not possible, generally speaking, the blood test would be done because the person was probably at the hospital anyways and so they're probably having blood drawn for hospital and so we would ask, while you're doing that, you need some also to prove you was, your shoes aren't being influenced by alcohol, excessive bar, violations. Okay, thanks.
Here.
Dan, I'm thinking I'm understanding, you're, you're concerned and it does appear to be, at least in ambiguity, according, it says that if the officer's erects, the medical professional shall draw the sample of less proviso, less the life is in jeopardy. To me, I think the answer to your question should be, the medical professional makes the decision as to whether the life is in jeopardy or not, but it doesn't say that, but, I mean, my sense is that, you know, we as a legislative body, you know, it would certainly be my intent for the medical professional to make that call. If the medical professional believes the life is in jeopardy, they're not required to draw the sample. Would that, does that address your concern that if we kind of expressed the intent or were you looking for a change in the language of the statute?
Well, yeah. To me, I, I, I favor, I guess, what you're describing, but more importantly, I just think they, as I started out, I think our officer, your understanding, they may direct and the medical person may go, I'm not going to do that because I'm the guy without training to decide whether they have, you know, it jeopardizes their health. I don't know if that's how it goes down in practice, I assume it does.
Is there anybody here on the council or importantly, you chief, who would disagree that that's the way this should be interpreted in the field?
I'm just trying to, I'm reading this through again, I, I don't think that, I, I understand what, what both of you are saying. Just because the police officer says, do, I, I am certain if the doctor on scene says, no, we can't against X, Y, and Z, that's not going to be an issue.
Thanks. And that will be on the record with ten, Michael.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? All right, all calls go on adoption of ordinance two-three-five, aye. Mrs. Sweetberg, aye. Ms. Nelson, aye. Mr. Sherman, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Michelson, aye. Mr. Wong, aye. Mrs. Meyer, aye. Mrs. Moorehead, aye. Mr. Ryanian, aye. Mrs. McFadden, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Gallagher, aye. Motion carries. Now looking for a motion on two-three-five six, adopting the two oh one sixteen or traffic permits for Kansas City.
So moved.
Okay. Good motion is second, again, any further discussion? Another roll call vote. Mrs. Weaver, aye. Ms. Meyer, now, Ms. Nelson, aye. Mrs. Sherman, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Michelson, aye. Mr. Wong, aye. Mrs. Meyer, aye. Mrs. Moorehead, aye. Mr. Ryanian, aye. Mrs. McFadden, aye. Mr. O'Dell, aye. Mr. Gallagher, aye. Motion carries. Next, I entertain a motion to approve agreement with Wacky McDonald from agents of our streetlight system, so a second. Motion is second, Ted?
Mary, I will need to recuse myself on two zero one six, this is six, for company interest.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I entertain a motion to consider approval of agreement with Integrity Line Location Services for underground line location services related to our streetlight system. So you're also going to recuse, recuse yourself?
Yes.
All right?
Second.
Good motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? One name, motion carries. JD, we already did a, a little mini report, but we would welcome you to the podium to give us the official report and so that we can all give you a round of applause. A, a fantastic job done, it was a great, great event and please pass along our congratulations and our heartfelt thanks to the committee.
I will, I wanted to thank the committee certainly here and also City Council individually and collectively for their support of the event, it was, it was a great day and once again, we had wonderful weather, great crowds, everyone's seen that world all the time, so I do, I thank my committee and, and Providence and everything else.
Thank you so much, can I, does anybody have any specific questions for JD?
Before you were here, there was questions in reference to the ten thousand dollars and, and how important it is and certainly on that committee, I understand that if you could share with us how that ten thousand dollars and how, how it's used to secure talent in that place.
Well, we've been very fortunate since the City Council first approved that ten thousand dollar budget line, that we have tried to, to keep our, our expenses in line and to generate as much revenue as possible on that day through both gate sales of tickets and also sales merchandise, beverages and all that. So slowly over time, with that backstopping of ten thousand dollar budget line, we've been able to do two things. And the first is, is at the beginning of the cycle, that is at the beginning of the year and even now in the late stages of the current year, we are able to look for and potentially secure talent that we want eight, nine, ten months out. Because performers of a high caliber would like to have deposits, they'd like to know that, that we have backing, that we have the ability to, to come through, kind of the disabled to come through. And for a number of years, that, that simply wasn't possible, we would come to the end of the cycle and the medical count would essentially be drained. And lately, we've come out even or almost even, for those of you that, that remember some of those years. And fortunately, because we, we put that backstop in place, we took that ten thousand dollars and it was there for us to use and to build upon, we've now been able to, to do just that, to bring the kind of talent and to secure that talent before some other festival, before they set their schedule and we're unable to get the players or the groups that want. So it, it has become a very important keystone for us. I know when we started this particular cycle of the, of the fest, we knew that there would be potentially some shortfalls in fundraising and in fact, from last year to this year, from the twenty fifteen fest to the twenty sixteen fest, from a donation standpoint, we came up short about seventy-five hundred dollars. But because we knew that that was potentially going to be a place, we still did not have to wait in order to sign Marilyn May, who we signed the contract with and very timely way to secure her in the schedule, we were able to move ahead in order that we do to make Justice Fest this year success. And in the end, now that most of the bills are paid, we were able to add about fifty-six hundred dollars to the bank account over where this cycle ended last year. So we were there consistently building that fortress, but if, if we didn't have that ten thousand dollars, we were falling essentially forty-five or, or five thousand dollars short of what we had in our, our capital this year. So it was very important to us to be able to have that continue.
Any further question?
No, council, I, I would like to ask, because I know when we had a rep meeting the other night, JD was not totally positive about this as he would be accepting the chairmanship for next year. So I would suggest that we generously, um, um, accept him as our chair for next season, all those in favor, say aye.
Well, to, to be fair, I, I am, I am very positive about Justice Fest, I enjoyed very much working on it and continue to do so. I apologize that I wasn't able to, to be here when this came up on the agenda. I was attending my sixth and probably my last cross-country banquet over across the parking lot at Chana Mission, like having a senior there, the last of my kids to go through. And so for now, we're, we're sort of looking at all the things that we've done and all the things that we do as we're going to become empty nesters, so I appreciate that very much. I will, I will make a decision before the end of the year and I will let you know, I thank you very much for your support.
Thanks JD for all you did.
Next item is mayor's report and let's see, I attended my monthly Northeast Mayor's meeting, which is always great for all of us Northeast Mayors to share what's going on in our cities, we've got a really good, good group of, of mayors. I met with the director of an organization called First Call. This is an organization that some of our money goes to when we, when we donate our money to United Community Services. This is one of the organizations I've noticed that ends up getting some of the money. This organization, I, I think is a great organization, they're located at Nineth and State Line and they offer either free services or reduced rate services for families and individuals and I'll read their, their mission. It says, mission of First Call is to reduce the impact of alcohol drugs and addiction by providing quality resources to individuals, families, and the community. The director actually reached out to me to let me know that these are services that they want to provide our community and other communities, they feel like people don't really understand that there's a great resource available to them. She, I've got a packet of information I wanted to give to you and a bunch of cards, she would actually let me with you in person and let you know about the type of services that you have. Being our first responders, you're probably coming into contact with people most often who could benefit from these services. She provided cards that you could have as many as you wanted, that you could actually hand out to individuals that you might thought, might think could benefit from this. So anyway, it was a great meeting and I appreciated her reaching out, she's going to be doing that with a lot of the other mayors. We also had the Great Village Foundation meeting, which several of you attended, getting ready for our Mayor's Tree lighting, please make sure that you have that on your calendar, it is Thursday, December first, it's always a very fun event, even if you don't have kids, it's still very fun to come. Also, the gingerbread decorating party is going to be Sunday, December fourth, again, a very fun event, you don't have to do a gingerbread house, but if you just stop by, I'm sure people would love to see you. The Mayor's Volunteer Appreciation Party is Friday, December ninth, hope to see you all there, you'll be getting invitations in the mail, but if you'll go ahead and put that on your calendar as well. There's also, Laker Bage is hosting an open house Thursday, November seventeenth, for those of you who have gone to that before, it's a great event, we really encourage those of you who have not gone to go, get Thursday, November seventeenth, Laker Bage, it's a great party, Katie, isn't it? And then one more to put on your calendar, the Northeast Chamber Gala is Saturday. And then one more to put on your calendar. The Northeast Chamber Gala is Saturday, November nineteenth. And Megan has already sent invitations out to you. We still have four openings at our table. It, again, is another great event. Simon Auction Dinner, really, really nice event. So we have four, four more openings if you're available for that. We also had our statue breaking, which was great. We had Paul Benson there, who is curator at the Nelson, and he's working with us to help clean our statuary and come up with a maintenance and restoration plan. And at our meeting last week, we talked about in the spring, getting together a group of volunteers and training them on how to clean the statuary so that we can come up with sort of a, adopt a statue type cleaning, which will help our money go a lot further with the call. So we'll let Paul clean those that, you know, probably deserve to have a professional cleaning then, but then there are others that, you know, I'm happy to clean. So we'll be talking more about that in the spring. And then, let's see, I also attended the Main Street Coalition Dinner. I was Melissa Rooker's guest at that. So that was, that was a nice event as well. And I think that's all I have.
Staff reports.
Yes.
What time is the tree lighting?
Tree lighting is at six o'clock.
Yeah. And what time is the gingerbread house?
It's usually nine.
Like one at three or something?
Yeah. And it's just gonna be one session.
Oh, just one session?
If they wanted to report elementary school, just one session.
Oh, okay. On the website, then you can register. Okay, Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few items. We did our annual drug takeback in partnership with the DDA. And just so you know, we collected three hundred twenty-one pounds of unused medication for residents on that day. So quite a bit is now falling into the hands of young people. We had two officers this past weekend that were recognized by the local chapter of MAD for their DUI and alcohol enforcement. Officer Josh Putoff and Officer Casey Daly were recognized by that group in the metro area and all of other police officers and sheriff's deputies. Staff is going to be attending Special Olympics event on Friday. We're going to hand medals to the Special Olympics athletes in their rolling event and as well as the volleyball event this weekend. And then, just in case you see one of our police cars up in Iowa, we are sending two officers to the funeral for the Urban Dale Police Officer who was available on duty last week. And it's been a tough week. I think there's ten last week police officers prosecuted. So anyways, we had two officers that, we had actually eight officers asked to go and answer that. So two are going up there to their respects. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Chief?
Thursday night is our resident meeting for our Damar Montana project, now called the Little Water Drive and Water Control Project. So that's our meeting to discuss the current state of the project and to get some feedback on, on their thoughts about direction of the project.
And where, what time is that?
It's the eighth yard at six P M. There will be a presentation to begin. It's pretty clear up the streets. I held an house meeting. I'm working on our presentation at six to talk about the state of the project and then answer questions and, 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 and eventually just so on. And then we have some feedback. Then we will, there will be solutions presented or anything like that at the meeting. It's very initially super eight is the second meeting we're going to have, which we will present some solutions to the project. Same place in PR six P M. Based on that, we'll modify some plans and grab that back to Council for potential this whole stack program. So solutions sets on that and we're going to new stage and that project. So City Hall and PD interest project, it's been ongoing. We're trying to get a lot accomplished before the end of the month. We have a large chain long build. There's going to be a lot of concrete work in the residence suite, concrete surfaces we completed this week. We'll be moving on the grates and the concrete. These trees will be installed next week. Irritations, they're moving. Kind of doing our very best to have better things, especially mainly by around Thanksgiving towards the end of the month. So we'll get up on that. So, so we can get a feel of what's going to be like out there already. It's still dark, dirt, so it's not very attractive yet. So that I wrote a couple of updates on that. It's really starting to see it. They've taken a little bit to the streets. My small curb on the west side of the developer are in place. They're working on their road parkway around U. D. In the same state. So definitely changing a lot. One of the crazy things I updated on some of the items that we're going to happen next year. One of the main things bad in that list is the project at Row, the actual physical connection to Row. We're already not going to open it. We'll just make it open construction traffic through the spring anyway. It's a lot of due. We're going to do my last fall. Coupled with utilities that were finishing up, that was the main reason for just with the idea that we didn't want to push it before winter. There's no reason for it to have to be done this fall. We're not going to open it really for public traffic until later, early for summer of next year. We're just going to start that in the spring with good weather. We, 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 the upper end of the traffic is getting there as well. Contractor, big question. Everybody's on board with that change. So everything else will continue. They're not supposed to, at any point, whether they're going to work in time. It's been a lot of thinking there. So it's starting to change a lot. I'm actually going to be worried about this. Any other questions?
Thank you. Lisa?
I did a memo because I have more to learn. I haven't mentioned one for anything. So the first one is the sales tax rates. I did a breakdown of all the different Johnson County City's sales tax rates. What I found interesting, I've done this over a number of years and updated every once in a while. For me, what is interesting is a number of special T V C I D projects that have been added to it. When I first started doing it years ago, there were none on there. Overland Park maybe have one, like Oak Park Mall. Now, you know, it's interesting to see all of those have been added. And it might change tomorrow depending on how that goes for the, for the course of those types. The, we got our award for the CAFR, the Compliment Financial Report. So that came in this week, which is for excellence in financial reporting. I think, I don't remember what year, but it's like the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh year of these. The tax levying rates, another chief that I gave you, it came in at nineteen point four seven one. It always adjusts a little bit. We, I try to keep it the same, but depending on how everything finalizes out, it always seems slightly. Google Fiber, we received our first quarterly check and I gave you a breakdown on that. The amount was seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars for one house and one hundred and fifty-five subscribers. I would assume that that number will be a lot, hopefully. The, oh, forgot the budget book. I gave you your budget book. It's also in PDF format if you prefer PDF and it should be on the website. I think it is on the website. So if you'd like, or if you're someone to it, it's also out there. And then the streetlight fund issue, we received the funds last Monday and then we purchased the streetlights on Tuesday. So that is all that was. Any questions?
No other questions, just two comments. First, congratulations on your work. Again, you're doing a great job. My second comment is just to note that the fluctuations are very small given increased tax rates all around us. The City of Perry Village tax rate is the lowest it's been for the last six years. All of the same. Thanks.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay. Last thing, anything?
I want to let you know for the next meeting of November twenty-first, we have two presentations. One is going to be First Washington. They will be here for their annual report. And secondly, Johnson County Parks will be here to discuss, I'm going to plug my, to the Parks Master Plan conjunction with, kind of hooking with through last week. We opened the last weekend.
The, the Master Plan?
And the Activity Center. So we went through and we had an update for the Network Parks Master Plan and the new metal road that we're going in the Activity Center. Their board has not approved the concept yet. They're still working on drafts. They're supposed to go for them. I believe November sixteen for approval. They will hit here to discuss what happened at that board meeting. Should we provide an update? The Activity Center will need to go to the planning commission for approval on December the sixth. I believe it's almost later than that. So those are two presentations that will be forthcoming. I also wanted to discuss with you a little bit about the health insurance that was recently passed by the council. During that meeting, there was some questions to see this about whether or not the possibility existed for elected officials to join that program through the city. Dave at that time indicated he did not believe so. At the meeting, staff kept in discussion with Seabird about that topic. And through additional research with United specifically, elected officials can give up on insurance. And so we're going to bring that back on the November twenty-first for discussion. This is not necessarily a staff recommendation, but this was posed a question to our insurance center. We're going to bring that back on November twenty-first. The reason why you would like to go down that path, it has to be decided November twenty-first because those forms are due by the end of the month. And so we're going to bring that back for discussion because that discussion with this basically did not do for, after Dave presented what he thought was the correct answer at that meeting. We learned this late this afternoon. And so I wanted to give you a heads up that that would be coming back to the state in the package, not for the November twenty-first meeting, if you'd like to discuss that further.
Any questions? What, what did you say, First Washington was coming?
Next meeting. Twenty-first.
Be nice.
Always.
The, and last one I listed is the exterior grant committee will be meeting this one day, through the session. And that annual report will be coming up in the near future too.
JD, do you have anything else? Gwen?
Yeah, a lot covered so far. I checked a lot of those on my list as well. Tomorrow's going to be a very busy day around the campus. We, as Keith mentioned, there'll be more concrete out patio, but that's also election day. Out of community center, we have two court sessions. So we, it'll be very full. We tried to anticipate that. We messed employees in the park off-site. We messed election workers in the park off-site. So we're, we're hoping that all goes smooth tomorrow. The, all the other items are checked off. We did have a very, very meeting of Johnson County Parks and Forest District. I think you'll be very pleased with the master plan they're giving in two weeks. It's an exciting project.
I just know what I read in the article, you know, unfortunately, it looks like the main opening of the park got close to going in that process. But you've seen them persuade them to keep some local life. The trail on park might still be open in two thousand seventeen. Can you comment on the likelihood of that and sort of the logistics of what you can reasonably expect there?
Yeah, good, good question. I would actually invite all of you to strongly encourage that when they're here in two weeks. You know, originally, Paul and I were telling people that the park would be open in about one year from, from now, October twenty seventeen. And when they added the Activity Center into their bid and the construction budget, they recognized that they weren't going to finish within twelve months, you know, design building and construct it. So they extended that into construction, they're estimating April twenty eighteen. And we're suggesting to them, while the Activity Center may not be open until twenty eighteen, yeah, April twenty eighteen, please do all that they can to open other parts of the park, particularly the trail system that could be opened by the end of the fall. They, they're open that. They're, they won't know for sure until they get the bids in the next couple of months. But they, they're optimistic and we continue to remind them that it would be great to start using at least part of the park next fall.
Thanks, Gwen. Next item is old business. Council, any old business to come up for us, Ted?
Good. Couple of questions. First of all, on Google Fiber, I don't know, everybody's from the news here lately on, they're basically pausing the program. So I would like to know, and we don't have to answer tonight, how it's Wes or Keith, who it is, but kind of where we are overall in the city and how far are they and are we complete through the City of Prairie Village? I did print, in the second part, part is, I printed an article out of magazines, trade magazine. So unless somebody subscribes to the electrical contractor magazine, you know, I had this article.
Just for the picture.
Yeah. But it actually sums up kind of what's taking place in Google and kind of gives some reason why they think. And basically, it gets back to our previous discussion on, we started looking at wireless networks and we started looking at parts and pieces on right of ways, really kind of the next step. So anyway, I had to run across this article today. It was pretty intriguing. I just want to make sure what happens next with Google. Are we eighty percent down, sixty percent down? And then are they going to commit to finish the city? And then are they going to maintain it? I don't know if anybody knows that question right now. So again, I don't, not looking for an answer. It's just, it's just being on the staff and hearing like, hey, if we work, we'll get through it.
Keith, do you know how far down we are in Prairie Village?
Essentially, George Google is about Prairie Village, where the main infrastructure is, fires and all of the residential area. But I can't say that there's one and every person does everything all around the city. I can't, I don't know for sure.
I just got it installed last week.
And, and I don't know if that's going to continue or stop. I, I don't know. I just, I just brought it up for people to think about. You know, we get all these green Google boxes and Google is what I do takes over that. I, you know, they may stay on, I, I don't know. It's just, as we start thinking about right of ways and what happens, these are the things that's changing pretty quickly.
So is Google paused in Prairie Village? Did they just say, whoa, they're, they're moving forward in Prairie Village?
Right. They talked about pausing the areas that they're not in already.
But we're considering, Mary, they're already in. So people who haven't been hooked up yet in Prairie Village, but signed up, should expect to still be hooked up. Okay.
That, that's my understanding.
Right. And that's just why I brought it. But I, I don't know. I, I hope so. I hope that's.
Well, the mayor's got to know.
I mean, I'm just saying, I just got picked up last week and based on what I read, there was nothing that said that they were going to stop servicing the area they were already in. It was more of the areas that they had not started building out yet.
Okay.
So I think we're okay.
Are they built out of the, the main infrastructure everywhere in Prairie Village that they intend to be?
It's only five cent. Basically, we're not saying it may not be one hundred percent in every corner. It's largely there. And I can confirm my call is exactly what I think.
Is this a national pause? I never heard of it.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
We can all be there as well.
Thanks.
Keith, can you let us know the next meeting that we're going for? Thank you. Any other old business? Council, any new business? Uh, we have another executive session. So for our audience members, this will be the end of the council meeting this evening. Ted, do you have the, okay?
of council meetings this evening, Ted, do you have the, okay?
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to PSA seven five dash four three one nine, these states, we have a five three session in the executive session, in a multi-purpose conference period, not to exceed twenty minutes, the first purpose of discussing possible acquisition of property, present will be the mayor, city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, and city attorney. Is that it?
All of them, please, I.
Aye.
Alright, thank you for having us tonight.